Take action on is procedural. We've learned that Al Skrzynski is going to need to be absent for at least this meeting and possibly next. And as the secretary, there are things that need to get signed. So we are asking the board to nominate and appoint a secretary pro tempore that would be able to fill the duties of the secretary while Al is out.
I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Adam Schoenberg as the secretary pro tempore.
I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. Adam Schoenberg as secretary pro tempore.
Second that motion.
Can I have a roll call?
Ms. Foss?
Aye.
Dr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Sotarius?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
And Quast?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Schoenberg, for being willing to fulfill those, that role.
Okay, next I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Foss?
Aye.
Dr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Sotarius?
Aye.
Mrs. Quast?
Aye, motion carries.
The first action item that we have for the board, and the only action item that we have for the board, is the approval of the 2022-2023 academic calendar. This was first presented to you back in February in a draft proposed form. We have not made any changes since that meeting.
Any questions or comments on the calendar? Okay, if not, I need a motion to approve the 2022-2023 academic calendar as presented.
I so move.
I'll second.
Mr. Sotarius?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Ms. Foss?
Aye.
Mrs. Quast?
Aye, motion carries.
All right, moving into discussion and information items. The first item here, an update on the development of our instructional coaching program. So I'm going to invite Dr. Cesarek to, along with probably, I would imagine, the instructional coaches to come on up and discuss with the board. As you know, instructional coaching is going to help us move closer towards our mission and vision and hit on a couple of the strategic goals, including achievement and professional development. So whoever's going first?
Good evening. We do have all the coaches here with us tonight. The last time they were here was December, and they gave you a little preview of what they would be doing this semester. And I want to say that they've all been very excited and have jumped in and very enthusiastic to begin. Next year, they will be full-time as coaches. Right now, they're dabbling and practicing, and they have a little information to share with you tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Webb. I'm one of the instructional coaches, and I'm at Menoka Intermediate School. So we just wanted to go through some of the things that we've been implementing so far. For each coach that we've been, each one of the coaches have been engaged with at least one teacher. Some have been lucky enough to do two already. But we are going through a full cycle with them. Normally, it's like a four-to-six-week course, full-time. Right now, it's taking a little longer because we are still teaching. But we're getting in as much as we can into the classroom. So this includes veteran teachers and new teachers. So I know the one I'm with, he's been there seven years. Some of them have been there more. Some of our coaches are working with the brand-new student, our brand-new teachers. So it's a wide range, and it's a wide range of interest as well. They're seeing progress in the classroom. So we listed some examples on there that we've been working with. So student engagement is a huge one for most teachers, just trying to make sure all students are engaged at the level they need to be at. And then questioning and just collaborative learning with their peers. So one example we wanted to share was one of the coaches went through, and it was just the questioning of the students. And they are seeing the data they're collecting. The students were engaged most of the time. They have certain skills, like the data that they set up. So it's different per teacher. But they're seeing the questioning increase, the engagement with the students is increasing. And this goes down too with one of ours who was working in the lower levels as well. So they're seeing it at the higher and in the lower, which is really cool. And we find it kind of awesome because we watched all this training and then seeing it like in real time. It's like, how is this actually working? And it is, it's really cool to like experience. So we're actually continuing our professional development. We just finished Jim Knight since we took that course. They actually provided us with a complimentary course. We had to finish within a month, but it was a 10-hour course from Jim Knight. And it basically went through topics like content planning, formative assessment, instruction, and community building within the classroom, and then how coaches can help teachers put that in a classroom. So we didn't get it free for very long, so we hauled through the 10 hours, and we were able to finish that. But we also have, in the summer, we are enrolled in Jim Knight's first 90 days. So that, the first three months is what is intimidating, since we've never done this. So that course is supposed to prep us for that as well. So we look forward to taking that this summer. And then in the fall, we are looking into the ICIC conference. We've met with some instructional coaches from other districts, and that was one of the big things that they thought would be really beneficial for us, to go and meet other coaches and see and share ideas. And we did send out a survey, I think this was back in January, just out of curiosity with what the teachers in the building. So we had 132 teachers respond, and over 50% said like, yes, I'm interested, whether that's surface coaching, us giving them resources, or if that's us going through an actual cycle with them. And then there was a little over 40% said like, yeah, they're interested, but they just need a little bit more information before they like, say, 100% that they'd go through a cycle. So hopefully, we were talking with the other coaches, and we were trying to plan on getting the person, either the person that we worked with, the teachers, or just us, but share back at the end of the year, like, hey, we did this with them, and it turned out really cool. This is something for next year. So hopefully, us sharing that extra information with them will also intrigue those 40% that are like on the, kind of on the border of that. But that's it, so, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for any of the coaches? By the way, that was Ashley Webb. And just to remind you, we have Jackie Tadley, John Seaton, Crystal Retzky, Lisa Lara, and Holly Klesowski.
Yeah, I assume that was just Ms. Webb's presentation. The other five are going to go next?
Our team.
I can say, as the board knows, like, we've invested a great deal in these six professionals. They've had release time, I think, every other week or so. And when they are over here, they are working nonstop. They are putting an incredible amount of time and effort into this, so thank you for all you're doing.
So I did actually have, when I started, three questions. And just listening to you, it goes to show how prepared and capable you all are. You've answered two and a half of them. So we'll move on to only the half that's left. With this number of people interested, and what's the mechanism, I guess, for choosing who's next or who's up or who's going to be in the rotation as far as the teachers?
So I don't think we, like, I don't think we finalized, like, we've talked. That was one of the questions we had when we visited the coaches. Was just that enrollment and then how to kind of organize that. So I don't know that we have one finalized in place. Like, we talked about having digital form, taking fill-in. Thought about having slips outside whatever tiny closet office we might keep in for that. So that's something that we'll have to come up with by the end of the year. If, great problem to have in theory. So, I mean, if that is the case in August, then I wouldn't be talking about what to do. But it'd be a problem to have. I mean, it would be one to talk about if it's for. So it's just going to be organized in a way that we.
Yeah, with your, the data, the chart I'm looking at, with 96% either in or maybe in, that sounds like a good problem to have. That's, I thank you guys very much.
And you may have said this in a previous presentation, I just can't remember for sure. When you say a course, is that set, you know, for each teacher? Is it individualized? Is there a certain amount of meetings or timeline that they have?
It's individualized, so it depends on the teacher and what they're, what they're looking for is in the coaching. For some, it might be as simple as gathering materials for them or resources. And it may only be a few weeks. For others, if they're digging deep into questioning or time on task and active listening, there might be a little bit more involved, four to six weeks. But it will be depending on the teacher. And the coaches will probably start out with just one or two at a time, but they hope to increase that as the year goes on, and they have more experience with the coaching program. Does anyone else have any questions?
I do. Just curious, for those who stated no in the survey, did they give a reason or reasons why they respectfully declined?
Yeah, one of them that did decline was, I think she actually is one of our teachers who's more veteran, and she works in the RTI services, so I think she isn't quite sure how to use that. But one of the trainings we're doing is how you work with PE teachers, how you work with fine arts teachers. So hopefully, as she hears that, there'll be a way for them to like see that we are still useful for them. So I think just getting the knowledge out there will help.
Sure, thanks. Maybe some of those nos will turn into maybes and then yeses.
And the coaches will be presenting at the beginning of the year at a faculty meeting for all the new teachers, and also as a reminder or refresher for the returning teachers that this, this is out there, it's for them, it's for whoever is interested. So hopefully, they'll gather some more, maybe turn some of those nos into yeses then.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but just a comment. Mrs. Retzky was my son's teacher, and when COVID first hit, you made it very engaging. And so with you having this role, with the rest of you, I know you all will continue to do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and keeping us up to date on your progress, and we're excited to see where it goes.
All right, next up is a presentation on our winter NWEA map scores. Dr. Cesarek?
Yep. I did send each of you a packet here that you can follow along, or you can watch on the screen as well. What we have is the overall grade level comparisons from winter of 2019 to winter of 2021. And just to remind you that we're probably not at the same level as we would have been, you know, pre-COVID, but our scores are improving. And we're looking to see, look at the cohorts as well as the growth from last year to this year and from our fall to our winter tests. On this first slide, you will see, it's kind of color-coded for the cohorts, starting back in 2018. These are all winter scores for math. And you will see that if you track and follow the scores as the cohorts move through the grades, you will see that there is growth from year to year. And also, if you look at the focus on 2019 to 2021, again, to remind you, we weren't testing in 2020. So the scores may be down a little from comparing from 2019 in the winter, but we're going to continue to focus on the math foundational skills, especially at the primary grades. And as our cohorts continue on through, we will see in the other slides as well that they have continued to show growth from year to year. Does anyone have a question on that? Okay, the next slide is the MAP Math Comparison from our fall scores to our winter scores by each grade level. You will see that every grade level is displaying growth from fall '21 to winter '21. We're going to continue to monitor this progress at the completion of our MAP Spring Testing. Any questions? Next is reading. Another chart to compare the cohorts. Sorry. As they move through from year to year. Again, you will see there was growth made within each cohort. Our reading scores did not appear to be as impacted as math when comparing 2019 winter to 2021. The next page is our MAP Reading Comparison from our fall test to our most recent winter testing by grade level. As you can see, every grade level is displaying reading growth from fall to winter. We're going to continue to monitor our reading progress at all levels with our spring scores. Next, I have results from our kindergarten Ames Web Plus comparisons. The students in kindergarten take the Ames Web Plus in the fall, and those are the scores in blue. And then compared with our most recent winter scores. You'll see that in the fall, there were 145 students who were scoring at the first through the 25th percentile, which would be considered below average. There were 175 students who are in the average range from the 26th to 74th percentile. And there were 73 students in the above-average range, 75th to 99th percentile. When looking at the winter scores, you will see that the number of students in that bottom percentile, below average, decreased, which is what we wanted to see. There's more students in the average and in the above-average range. And again, we'll continue to monitor these scores in our spring Ames Web Plus.
Something that Dr. Cesarek and I noticed when we were looking at the Ames Web Comparisons, we saw some differences in when the kiddos come in in kindergarten. So there was some big differences between our elementary schools. So we spoke about maybe targeting some of those elementary schools, and how do we get those kiddos, perhaps skills, before they come into kindergarten? So they don't, we don't see a huge discrepancy at the very beginning of the year. But we've seen nice, once they've been with us, we've seen nice growth from all of the elementary schools.
Next is Language Arts, grade level comparisons. You'll notice that the scores are from fifth through eighth grade, comparing the winter scores from 2018 all the way through 2021. You'll notice, again, this is color-coded by cohort. We can see that growth was made within each cohort here. Our 2021 scores lag slightly behind winter 2019. The breakdown comparing our fall to winter language arts, again, fifth through eighth grade, each grade level's displaying language arts growth from fall to winter. We're going to continue to monitor that progress in our spring scores. I'd like to remind you that typically, we do see, when you're looking at all the scores, a little bit more growth as far as an increase in the mean rates at the lower levels as compared to the upper levels. There's, the students at the upper levels are still meeting their target. It's just that we don't typically see as much growth as we do at the primary levels from K2 or K3. Next is Science, grade level comparisons. Again, fifth through eighth grade, there's a slight science growth was made within each cohort. And then on the next slide, the Science Comparison from Fall to Winter Scores. Again, each grade level displays science growth from fall to winter. As you can see. At the beginning of the year, we talked about other areas that we're focusing on in addition to the academics. We talked about ready-to-learn behaviors. Going forward, we're going to continue to focus on positive behaviors for school with a concentration on our character education programs, our K8 Second Step Program. And just within the schools, I know that they work on school-community-building activities throughout the year to form that sense of family within their schools. Our continued next steps going forward, providing additional professional development for the new curriculum. Our instructional coaches will be providing support. Our focus on SEL with a needs assessment, professional development, and a curriculum review. And then our summer programs that we will put in place for our students to support them. Do you have questions?
I have the beginnings of a question. I have a comment first. I think we're all aware of the difficulty with 2020 in, in a year that was unlike any other. But with the, the fall to winter scores and the cohort scores improving really well, if you look at those two specifically, I'm extremely encouraged that, starting off from 2020 and with a new curriculum, we're still going in the student-to-student charts really, really well. So I think that's fabulous. And my only question would be, kind of aside from this data, where do we go to really assess? I know we'll get to it with the summer program later in the meeting, about what is lacking with that one, that specific five to five, what we did miss in 2020 with those students that are still in this grade level. I'm not sure if that makes sense, but if, with these two metrics being so high, there are some metrics that are even or dipping. And it might be what, not this year, that will understand how to reach that, if that's what I'm saying.
And I think another conversation that Dr. Cesarek and I noticed was that our math scores, we saw more of an impact on math scores. And when you think of teaching those math skills, it is better to have the kiddos right there in front of you, especially in those younger primary grade levels. So that's something we really want to focus on. And I do believe with the new curriculums that we have in place, that that really is going to target those math skills. We've heard wonderful feedback from the teachers that have already implemented Eureka Math at those younger grade levels. So we're very excited to see what those scores look like at this time next year. And we're going to continue to monitor that with our assessments throughout.
I think that you stated my question better than I stated my question, that next year, I will find extremely interesting in the specific student-to-student growth, not just cohorts and not just winter or fall to winter. So thank you for doing that.
I would also say, like, the benefits of having these types of formative assessments that we do multiple times is they can get very granular with individual students or a classroom or a grade level in the building or district-wide. And we can get whole swaths of data on if there are certain sub-standards or specific learning standards that we seem to be missing the boat on. Like, for whatever reason, the strategy we employ just did not, you know, have the right type of effect. So our school improvement teams really get into disaggregated data at a standard-based level. They look at individual students to find, to identify specific students. But they also look at where did our grade level seem to miss the boat? Or where did my classroom maybe not be as effective as a different classroom? And then they're engaging in discussions about what strategy did you use that I didn't use? So this happens on a monthly, weekly basis in collaboration with teachers, so.
And I know that we do offer support in our tier program as well for reading and math, and that the teachers and the interventionists work closely together and have their day-to-days to make sure that we're not missing anyone, that we're there to provide support for those kids who need it.
You may even receive more information from the specific buildings about those, as Dr. Munn said, those granular reports next month in the school, in the individual school, school improvement plan reports that you guys will all receive.
And just to finish, I'm blown away. These numbers couldn't say any more clearly that in our buildings this year, our students are learning really, really well, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Stopp is going to talk about a preliminary look at our plans for summer programming here in 2022.
I'm going to work on presenting my screen. Give me just a second here. All right, so we have been looking at, oh, and I'm sorry, I've got, Ms. Riggery is going to come up and help as she has been a huge part of our summer programming for many years at Menoka Elementary School and the district level.
Hello.
So we're going to talk a little bit more about, and I'm not sure why my presentation is loading and taking so long to load, but we're going to talk a little bit about our school, our needs for summer programming. And we took a look at the prior programs. There we go. It's not wanting to go. I might have to present it in just my work mode if that, yeah, I don't know why it's not showing. Okay. So we began by pulling many of the administrators in together to first look at what have we done in the past? What worked from what we've done in the past? And what do we want to do in the future based on the student learning needs that we're seeing right now? And from that, we came up with, let me see if I can make this a little bit bigger for you guys as well. Nope, that just made it smaller. Okay. Can you guys all see that one now? Not really? Erin, do you want me to share it with you, and you can try? Okay. I do think we're missing one slide in the PDF, but I'll explain that when we get there. So we looked at what we've done in the past, what we would like to do for our students at the immediate time right now, and we've come up with four programs. One is Course Recovery, which is very similar to what we've done in the past for our kiddos that were, did not meet all of the requirements for their grade level. Camp Menoka is kind of a new program that we have created. Summer Enrichment is very similar to what we've done in the past with a few tweaks. And then we'll have Menoka Bridge Program, which we're going to talk about, which is a new program that our team has created based on all of the techniques that we have learned for teaching our kiddos remotely. So we can continue to offer programming throughout the summer, no matter if kiddos are here or if they are learning from afar. So Erin, if you go to the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about Course Recovery first. So Course Recovery is for our students that have not met the course credits for their specific grade level. We typically see this more in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. And they may be at risk for failure at that grade level. The Junior High actually already does Course Recovery throughout the school year. But if the kiddos are still at risk of failure at the end of the year, then we'll invite those kiddos in to work with our online learning program, Edgenuity, throughout the summer to earn those course credits. So that is something that we have, a teacher that would work with the kiddos here, as well as the Edgenuity instructors. All right, and then if you go to Camp Menoka, Mr. Riggery is going to talk about that a little bit.
So we talked a little bit about what our summer school programs looked like last year and what they've looked like in previous years. Last year, we kind of had the big, big, long one. We had four solid weeks, five days, four weeks, right after school let out. And then had the August Jump Start Program that we've had in the past, where it's a little bit shorter. In previous years, we've done two weeks in June and two weeks in August. That's generally been kind of our jump start or dive into summer programs we've had in the past. So this is kind of a combination. Last year, a lot of the feedback I received since I oversaw that four-week program was that it was a bit long. It started, we started off really strong, all the kids that signed up, you know, all the parents that signed their students up, they came regularly, probably for the first two weeks, and then it really kind of died down the last two weeks. It just got to be a bit much. Some families went on vacation. There were other community programs going on, local churches and whatnot, that offers some summer programming as well. So we took a different approach this time. We thought maybe if we staggered it a little bit and shortened it up just a little bit and worked around some of those big Menoka camps that, that the, you know, community offers. So we thought if we did one good, solid week of math and then one good, solid week of reading, where the comprehension was really on those two subjects. But in addition to the math, so we, we kind of came up with this idea of a week in June for math with SEL and fine arts embedded within that, similar to what we did last year. We had a rotation with the social worker doing some SEL activities one of the days, and then the next day, they'd go to PE. This summer, we're hoping, you know, depending on the teachers that we get signed up to come and help us out, you know, hoping to be able to provide some art, some PE, some music, some SEL, along with that comprehensive math week. And then we would do the same thing on that comprehensive reading week as well. So kind of hit those subjects hard, but in a fun way. There are a lot of different games that are out there that, you know, do incorporate the standards for grades K through four, but make it in a fun way, more individualized, trying to keep it light and fun, but still hit those standards from the previous grade level for the kiddos. So that was sort of our idea of how to incorporate and also our ELL teachers as well. So we would be inviting our multi-language learners as well and have that incorporated. So that's, that's our vision for Camp Menoka this summer. Again, we're looking at like a week for the math, possibly skip a week, and then have our week for the reading. And that way, parents can sign up for one or both, depending on their schedules as well.
Yeah, the focus of this camp is definitely fun through learning, so the kiddos are enjoying that camp atmosphere. It's not something where they feel like they have to go to school, but they get to go to this camp, Menoka.
Then we also have had in previous years, we haven't done an enrichment-type summer camp in a couple of years, obviously. We did talk about that, I've overseen that in previous years before as well. And so bringing some of that experience with us into the committee, we talked about possibly doing enrichment within that Camp Menoka. doing enrichment within that Camp Menucha for the younger kids. They can get the writing, they could get the, the math, they could get the fine arts component, they can get the SEL component. We can kind of put it on a rotation basis. But for the older kids, we thought we would need something a little bit different, a little bit separate. So we would have a summer enrichment program, possibly, you know, at the campus, at the junior high or at MIS, where it would be focused more on those activities for the older kids. Just again, it will depend on the teacher response we get as far as what course they want to teach, but generally in the past, we've had things like disc golf, they've had fishing, they've had a lot of those type of activities geared toward the older kids. So we, we felt like we could kind of incorporate that enrichment with the younger kids within that Camp Menucha, but we felt like we still needed to have a little bit of an enrichment for the older kids. So this would be a separate camp.
So as Mr. Jerry shared, the, we always start with instructor interest. So if you have a passion, if that be fishing, if that is archery, or perhaps it's creative writing, it could be an art. So it's kind of, it's again, it's going to be a week-long of fun activities to really target some of those interest areas that the kiddos enjoy. So we would start with instructor interest and then gather student interest and then start scheduling. This would be like an early morning session, an early morning, probably start about 8:30, and then a later morning session. So it'll be two different sessions that'll last about an hour and a half each.
And that's typically how we did the enrichment before, but in the past, it's been more of like a K, K8 or grade one through eight. And really, with that large of a grade level or age gap, it was harder to pinpoint and really gear things to the interest. So we felt like having it this be five, eight, we could really get some higher level, you know, for the older kids.
All right. Then our next program that we, this was kind of a, I guess you could say, a brainchild from the committee as we were meeting. We were talking about how wonderful it would be to be able to offer a program that would give the kiddos a start to their next school year. So if that be a, like a running start into fourth grade math or a running start into fourth grade reading, or even for our kiddos that are maybe going from regular fourth grade to advanced placement in fifth grade, and maybe they want a running start to that advanced placement program, this would be the place for them. So these would be online learning courses. We're targeting it to be maybe three to four weeks. We still need to massage out those details. It would, again, the focus is going to be skills leading into their 2022, 2023 grade level, focusing mainly on math and reading. But again, if we have a teacher that might be interested in Spanish and offering a jump start into their Spanish course, maybe it's a kiddo that hasn't ever been exposed to that before, we would be able to offer that. So it's for all grade levels. It would be an online program. So if we've got friends that are in Florida for the summer for a few weeks, or maybe they're traveling for their sports season, they would be able to participate from afar even. So this allows our kiddos flexibility in their participation. The teacher for the course would create the course and then have office hours throughout the week, so the kiddos can check in with them. And if they have questions, but it would primarily be a self-driven course. The way I was thinking about it is when you go to like Barnes and Noble and buy your kiddos like getting ready for third grade book, that's what this would be, but geared more towards specifically what they're going to see in Menucha. So those are our goals for that Menucha Bridge Program. This is a brand-new program, so we do anticipate massaging this. We're very excited about it because we think that this can open a lot of doors for our kiddos and maybe each year build upon this to where it may be something to even help kiddos, maybe they weren't in advanced placement this year, but they really want to be in advanced placement next year, and they take that course and they can help that, help make those giant steps. So that is our Menucha Bridge Program. Our cost of programming is all covered through our ESSER grant. So, and we anticipate it covering completely the staffing, so that would be all of the staff. The staff, I don't know if we would call it stipends or salaries, Mary? Either one, stipend salaries, as well as the coordinators. We were looking at having an elementary coordinator as well as a campus coordinator. And then it would also help cover any supplies. We anticipate needing supplies for Camp Menucha as well as the enrichment program. So the ESSER grant would cover all of that. And I think now we can open it up to any questions that you guys might have, or even suggestions on what you, hearing this for the first time, what might help us make this program better.
Well, I'll just start by saying I love everything about what you guys were putting in these slides. I really like giving the options, but not overwhelming both the students and the, and the staff, giving chance to learn. Separately, the separating of the age groups is, I think, a really good idea. I think giving them the space to be their age is really great. So I'll see if anybody else has any questions.
The Course Recovery and the Camp Menucha, are those like half-days? Are they full-day? What's the timeline of those? Do you know yet? Camp Menucha would be a half-day program. And then the Course Recovery, what we typically do, the kiddos will come in the first week, so they get rolling into that course program. And then it's an online program that they would be able to finish on their own. If we have a way of tracking how the kiddos are doing, and if for some reason they're falling behind, they're not staying on the pace that the program recommends, then we would call them in and have some in-person work with them.
Yeah, that's the Course Recovery one, right? Is that what you asked about? Okay. And then the Bridge Program would be more self-paced.
And are these choice of parents? Are they recommended by staff? I know it may, you know, different, be different for different programs, but kind of the idea behind that. So the Course Recovery is something that will almost be prescribed by our administrators and the staff that the kiddos work with. So if you're at failure for not completing your grade level expectations, then you would be invited to come to that, strongly invited, encouraged. So is that accurate, Jason? And then for the, for all of the other courses, it will be open to all students. The Camp Menucha, we're going to reach out to some students that we think would definitely benefit from that time.
That's similar how we did it last summer, too. We opened it to everyone, but then we sent like a special invitation to like our students who are in our MTSS programming.
For the Course Recovery Program, do you happen to know or just kind of a guess on the participation rate or the completion rate of that program for those that you reach out to? Mr. Finkelstein, I think it's been a, the participation rate for the Course Recovery. How many, how many, typically, do you have all of the students complete it? Do we ever have kiddos that?
I'd say ninety, ninety-five percent. Five or six.
You.
I mean, it's, it's good to know, too, that we have Course Recovery going all year long, too, at the junior high school specifically. So these are the students that even through that, you know, still need a little bit more strong invitations, we'll call it.
Okay, so two, two questions. First, with the, the ESSER funds, would this be a free to the students?
That is an excellent question, and I should have put that in there. Yes, this will all be free to our students.
Perfect. Second, with the new program, the Brit, I think it's the, the Bridge Program, are students maintaining their device? Will they get a new device? What if they need a device?
So the only grade level we need to look at devices is going from first to second, correct, Mr. Souza?
Yeah.
Yes. So. Yeah, those are a few of the, the little parts that we need to iron out, how we're going to do that. But having, going one-to-one has really allowed us to create this program. One other tidbit that I forgot to mention, for the Camp Menucha Program, we would be able to offer satellite transportation. So we, we're not sure exactly which elementary school that will be housed at, but we would be able to offer transportation from the other three elementary schools. So parents will bring the kiddos to those schools, they'll get on a bus and come to that, that elementary school. All right. Thank you. We are very excited about these programs. I, we had about a three-hour workshop a few weeks ago and started ironing out all of the details and brainstorming, and I, I was very appreciative of all of the administrative support for this as well.
All right, I believe we are up to the administrative reports section. Mr. Searle could not be with us tonight, but I can tell you that he is heavily into capital planning for next school year, the next budget year. Mrs. Robinson and I met with him and went over an extensive list of, of projects that he'd like to propose, and we whittled it down a little bit to the projects that we think that, that we can support in an annual budget. So he should be back with us next month to answer any questions that you may have. Also, Ms. Massey could not be with us tonight, but you could see from the personnel report that her office and human resources has been quite busy. I think we had thirty-six new hires on, on this personnel report that you approved earlier. So thanks to Ms. Massey for her continued efforts there. Mrs. Robinson, I don't think you had anything else that you needed to share, but I, I can say on her behalf that the preliminary budget for next year is quite far along. However, we are bargaining with the MEA, so it's, that's the real hang-up before we bring you any solid numbers, is finalizing the, the salaries and benefits portion of the personnel side of the budget. So most of the other side of the budget is probably ready, you know, very far along, at least in the preliminary format. Mr. Souza, did you have anything else?
So as, as I know, the board has been looking at community involvement, so I thought I'd like to say how the technology team has been helping with community involvement in the past just two weeks alone. And with that, I'd like to say a quick thank you to Matt, Sam, Tom, Pam, Afrem, and our new hire, Alec, for helping put together various programs, such as the livestream band concert for fifth and sixth grade band, seventh, eighth grade band, the five-eight choir concert, where we kind of audio-mixed it. Obviously, you see all this. This takes a while to set up and test and eventually then tear down. And I just want to kind of say a quick thank you to everyone on the team that has put in time after hours and during hours to make all this kind of work and support our various programs that we put on. Secondly, I'd like to say, you've probably heard me talk about kind of like this server infrastructure project that's been, I've mentioned in a couple, every, every couple meetings. I sent out a big RFP for that, and I should have a lot more details for, at the April Board Meeting, and then a decision for you guys at the May Board Meeting. And basically what that is, is our entire kind of big server stack, if you will, of equipment that's at the elementary school. So everything that runs at Menucha Elementary School that isn't, or at Menucha 201, really that, that is not Google or Power School or finance software, generally runs on various servers over at the elementary school. And we're kind of beyond the point of where we should have already replaced it. So this summer, that's our big project, and we hope for approval when all the actual responses come in from various vendors. So we're pretty excited about that. And lastly, just a quick update, the laptops and Chromebooks that we ordered for second, you know, second and fifth grade back in January, and the laptops for aux and MES staff have not come in yet, and I don't even have firm ETAs yet. So the good news is, we ordered it months ago, so it's, I'm glad we did that, so thank you for your approval on that. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Heard a lot of positive feedback on the live streams of our concerts and choir and such, especially for families who are not in town, so really appreciate the time that your team puts into all that for our community.
Thank you. I should also mention, you know, Rich Searle and the maintenance crew to bus over or haul over all of like the choir risers and then tear them down so class can resume the next day. That's also kind of a, a chore, if you will. It's, it's a lot, so just want to quick shout out to the maintenance team as well.
I will say, Mr. Souza and his team have been quite impactful in helping this room kind of be a part of a little makeover now. I was going to comment about all the staff that are stuffed into the back of the room, and we realize that's the only way you can see the monitors. Well, we're going to go with that, that you're back there so that you can follow along with just the monitors. But we see this as kind of phase one of renovating this boardroom into a, a more flexible workspace for, for some of our district teams and everything. So thanks for your team's work there, sir. Dr. Cesarek, did you have anything else to share with the board? Sounds like a challenge. Anybody come up with a question for Dr.? Dr. Stopp.
I only have a couple of quick updates. Earlier in the year, October, November-ish, you guys might remember that we spoke about a Menucha Community Partnership Grant that we had applied for, and then we really didn't hear anything. So we had assumed that we weren't out of the running, but we just received confirmation last week that we are still in the running, they're just waiting for final allotments. So that's something that it, it is very similar to what we are setting up for our summer programming, where it's going to be additional support for kiddos after school. It's going to focus on incorporating that social-emotional learning, the arts, exploration of social-emotional through the arts, through, if that is through actual art, if that's through leisure activity, if that's through music. But it's, it's really going to focus on bringing community partners into the schools to support our kiddos, as well as providing transportation from that program, which has always been a hindrance. When we have after-school programming, we're not always able to get those kiddos home, so parents have elected, opted out of the programming because we know that transportation throughout our district can be difficult as wide as our district is. If you are here at Menucha Intermediate and you live up by Jones, that might be difficult for a parent to get you back and forth. So we're very excited about moving forward with that grant and excited to hear more from Izby once we have final allotments.
Let me, let me just clarify. I, I believe we've been awarded the grant, we just don't know what the number is yet. So only one hundred and thirty-seven entities in the state, and you're talking colleges, public school districts, and some other community-type things. So we were one of one hundred and thirty-seven. So your work was excellent in that grant, Dr. Stopp.
The other thing that I wanted to share, I know Dr. Mun had shared with you the Team Megan collection that we're doing this week. So we have themed days to collect coins. We've got Playad for pennies today. I did change my outfit because I was in my flannel shirt, but I figured I would dress up for the board meeting. And then we have Neon for nickels tomorrow, Disney for dimes, which you can wear Disney clothes or even bring, wear maybe what you might wear to Disney, so act, dress like a Disney tourist. And then Quarterback Day, which is wear sports clothes and bring, bring quarters to school. And then on Friday, we close it out with Dollars for Dreams. So that is dress for your dream job or maybe your dream college of where you would like to go to and bring dollars in. So I've had some of the building principals send me snapshots of the coins that they've collected already, and it is just outstanding. So thank you to our community for partnering with that. That's all that I had for tonight.
All right, I got to cross off the Community Partnership Grant of my list of things to say. So first, I wanted to point out to the board, you may have noticed that we made a switch in where we are placing all of the building reports that the board's been getting in, in Board Docs each month, but they've been in administrative content. So we realized this is just good information for everyone to have. So all of the building reports, the Chief Academic Officer Report, all of that is now going up into public content, so anyone from the community can, can read the wonderful things that have been, have been happening in the buildings all along. Other things that I would say, thank you to the board for spending some time last Wednesday speaking with IASB and getting a training on community engagement. I think it's important for the community to know that the, the people sitting up at this table are putting in extra time and learning and developing themselves as a board to, to try to be able to reach out and interact with the community on a, on a more frequent basis. So well done to all of you, and thanks for donating even more of your time. I will say, I believe registration is expected to launch right after spring break. We, we didn't think it was smart to ask people to do much of the paperwork and legwork stuff right before spring break when everyone has their eyes on, on that week. So the week of April 4th, you can expect to see some type of announcement going out that we are live and open. So, and we are also still doing the early bird discount on fees. If people register by May 15th would be the, the date, so that we, we can get the staffing a little bit more solidified and not have the early August rush that so often hits Menucha 201. Lastly, there are some interesting pieces of legislation that are working their way through the, the General Assembly. They say that they would like to wrap up this legislative session in early April. The, the primary is now moved to June, and so I imagine that the politicians want to wrap up the session so that they can then, you know, be back in their districts campaigning for the primary. So a journey and having a state budget is, by like April 8th, is rather unheard of. So we, we will wait and see. I'm not quite sure that they'll get everything done that they want to accomplish, but we may get an early look at what the state funding could look like for next year. There, there are some interesting There, there are some interesting bills out there. One of them would prohibit like any state standardized tests in grades K through two. We would still have the option of doing our, our own formative, you know, NWEA map for grades K through two if we chose to. But the kids' assessment that is, is often out there would be one of those that would be on the, the chopping block if something like that were to pass. I think that's already passed one house, and I think it's, it's in the Senate now, referred to assignments. So, that can sometimes be a graveyard, but we will see. And there's, there's other ones out there about mental health, and there's, there's bills out there about teacher evaluations next year, principal evaluation. So, we, we will keep monitoring the, the bills of note on how they could affect our workings here. But, yeah, it's the, the, the state budget is the one that we, we always kind of wait to see what type of new increased funding they may put for education and how that's going to impact our evidence-based funding, et cetera, on those parts. So, aside from that, we wish everyone a safe and happy, refreshing spring break. We are off next week, a week from today is when that starts, or I think for everybody, it starts this Friday as soon as the students are released. But school resumes back next on April 4th, I believe, Monday, April 4th. And so, everyone be safe, be smart, and enjoy your time, everyone. If there are any board topics we, we can discuss, otherwise, we do have closed session to discuss collective bargaining and specific evaluations of personnel.
Any board topics? If not, I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of collective bargaining and specific employee matters.
So, move.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
There, there is no action after closed session. So, thank you, everyone. Have a great night.